I will call the June 14, 2010 meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would the Secretary call the roll, please?
Nancy Keys. Jim Frederick.
Here.
Connie Yoshimura.
Here.
Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Eishem.
Here.
John Weddleton.
He is excused.
Bruce Phelps.
He is -- should be here.
Stacy Dean.
Hmm.
Terry Parks.
He is excused. Are we done? We have a quorum. The next item on our agenda is disclosures. We don't have any minutes this evening. Mr. Eishem, could you please handle that?
Yes. And Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
I do not.
Mr. Frederick? No. Ms. Yoshimura?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Yes. In the past, I worked for a law firm that represented the petitioner in case G1. And also in the past, I had been directed to participate because I had not been involved with work related to the matters before us. And I'm just bringing that up on the record. Also, I'm -- just as a point of disclosure, I have two grandchildren that live in the Lower Forty-Eight. I believe that they may work at some of their facilities. But I don't believe that, you know, that rises to a level of conflict. I don't have -- there's never been any money coming my way from the grandkids.
In regards to your law firm, are you still working for the same firm?
No, I haven't worked for them for a few months.
Okay. All right. That's just for disclosure purposes.
Yes, with regard to the grandkids.
Yeah. And thank you.
Not so far stretch, but I'm just putting it on the record, Mr. Eishem.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Dean?
No.
And I have none.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda under Special Orders of Business is the matter of rescinding the May 3, 2010 approval of Resolution 2009-036 and to approve a new resolution, 2009-036. This will need to be done in the form of two separate motions. Ms. Pease, would you like to take the lead on this since you were involved in bringing a lot of these issues to the commission's attention?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to rescind our May 3, 2010 action regarding Resolution 2009-036.
Okay. And I see that's been seconded by Mr. Eishem. Do you wish to speak at all to your motion?
Yes, just very briefly. When this came before us, I raised some questions. We didn't have the minutes with us at the time, so staff was asked to check the resolution. We passed against the minutes. And when staff did so, they discovered that there were several errors in the resolution because it had been based on a different case, basically. So therefore, we passed something that had one correction, but it needed several. So we're going to rescind what we did earlier on May 3 and then pass it right, pass the right version.
Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, and that earlier motion is rescinded. We need, yes.
Mr. Phelps, if you can help present. Mr. Phelps, do you have anything to disclose this evening? Thank you.
Ms. Pease, we now need a motion to approve the correct.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of a revised version of Resolution 2009-036, which is the site plan for the Alaska Railroad Freight Shed Parking Lot Development as in the version that was placed before us was in a packet.
Okay. And that motion has been seconded by Mr. Frederick. I don't know that that requires any discussion. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that resolution, new resolution, has been approved. Now, on D, our consent agenda, we have a resolution for approval regarding the second time extension for the terraces. Yes.
Madam Chairman, for approval of consent agenda, item D1A.
And it's been seconded by Stacy Dean. Is there any objection to that motion? Hearing none, that time extension is approved. Okay. Now, before we move on to our one public hearing this evening, Mr. McLaughlin, do we need to take formal action to postpone cases G2 and G3?
Yes, you do.
Let's take care of that before we go on to the hearing.
Madam Chair, move to postpone cases G2, 2010-068, and G3, S11814, until July 12, 2010, date served.
And that's been seconded by Mr. Frederick. Is there any objection? Hearing none, those cases are postponed until July 12, 2010. Okay. Now, moving back to case number G1, before we get started on this public hearing, I want to explain a little bit about how our overhead system is not working tonight. We don't have the capacity to display any visual aids on our Elmo. As you can see, it's gone, nor to hook up any computers so you could show anything like by PowerPoint or any other slides. So we're limited to your oral presentations and any boards you may have with you. We need to do all of our voices by a roll call if they're not unanimous, like we did at last month's meetings. And having said that, I'll invite staff to go ahead with their presentation at this time. Mr. McLaughlin?
There's an aerial photograph on page 30 of the packet. Might be helpful to look at to see the existing site. Fred Meyer is requesting to build a 10-vehicle gas station. It will go in the location of the existing garden center. A new driveway will be added to Benson Boulevard so that one driveway will be an entrance-only and another will -- the existing entrance and exit will become an exit-only. The parking lot will change slightly to accommodate five-foot-wide pedestrian walkway and 16 parking lot landscape islands. Also, the new entrance off of Benson Boulevard will take away some existing parking. The only architectural change to the site will be the addition of the gas station. Code requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross building area. The site plan shows 88 fewer parking spaces than the required number of 542, which is a 16.2 percent reduction. Fred Meyer applied for and received approval from the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals for, on Thursday night in this chamber, for the parking reduction or the parking variance. It was approved unanimously. Public hearing notices were mailed about this case. No comments were received from the Midtown or the Rogers Park Community Councils. On page 113 of the packet, there is a letter of opposition to the parking reduction. Staff felt that we should, you know, increase as much information as possible, so we took that letter and include it here in the packet for you to read if you're interested. Code states that 10 percent of the cost of improvements, up to 10 percent, can be spent on amenities for the project. In this case, the cost of the entire project is a little over, there's $1.6 million. On the bottom of page four, you can see the cost of installing landscaping in the pedestrian walkway and also the cost of the site improvement with the driveway to Benson Boulevard. The standard is met for this project since the site improvement exceed 10 percent of the total project costs. On page seven, there's mention of vehicular access. And the petitioner, Fred Meyer Store, has worked very closely with Municipal Traffic Engineer and Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities to devise both the internal circulation and the ingress and egress to the site. They work closely with public agencies to design the new traffic pattern in this driveway from Benson Boulevard. There is a report, the Kittleson Report, on page, starts on page 49 of the packet. The bottom of page 50 talks a little bit about traffic, whether or not there'd be sufficient parking on the site. We found that there would be ample. Page 103 of the packet, there's the agency comments from the Department of Transportation recommending approval of this site plan and supporting the site plan. The store was constructed in conformance with Title 21 prior to requirements for arterial landscaping and 5 percent interior lot landscaping in the large retail establishment site plan review. Therefore, the site is considered to be an approved site plan and is grandfathered in terms of its arterial landscaping and interior landscaping. Currently, the only landscaping on the site are the 21 white spruce trees planted along the south side of the store. The proposed site plan and landscape plan provide 3 percent interior landscaping and no arterial landscaping where the site butts these three major rights away. Any additional landscaping would reduce the number of parking spaces, which already shows 16.2 percent fewer than the required, what is required by code. The petitioner considered providing arterial landscaping where the new gas station would have but the, well, the petitioner considered landscaping all over the site, and this was sort of through negotiation what was rested upon in terms of, you know, minimal or, you know, the maximum amount of landscaping that we could, that the public could get and parking The petitioner considered providing arterial landscaping where the new gas station would have but the New Seward Highway. However, there's not sufficient space for the cars to make that turn out of the gas refueling area. Also, there are overhead electrical easements that run across the property, which prevents the gas station from being moved further east away from the New Seward Highway. With the proposed landscaping, the site will have 2 percent less landscaping than what is required by code, and there's no arterial landscaping. Still, the proposed landscaping is a significant site improvement as there is very little existing There's a sidewalk and a bike rack on the west side of the store. The site plan proposes to add a five-foot-wide pedestrian walkway from the main entrance to the north parking area. The pedestrian path will be brick-red painted cement. The pathway will not connect all the way to the main entrance. It will go to the sort of the donut pull-in area, and a crossing doesn't seem to be an issue there. But the pedestrian walkway doesn't connect directly. That's because there's sort of a misalignment of the doors and the curb cuts with that, I guess, that traffic divider area. There are sidewalks within the right-of-way along the Seward Highway, Benson Boulevard, and there's a discontinuous sidewalk along Northern Lights Boulevard. The Planning Department recommends approval of this site plan review subject to conditions 1 through 10 on pages 14 and 15. You'll notice on condition, on page 14, condition 6, the Planning Department's recommending increasing the caliper of the trees and providing moose fencing. In condition 7, the department is recommending that if space is allowed, allows it for some sort of screening, wood fence screening of the trash compactor on the backside of the building, on the east side of the site. The department recommends bollard covers for new and existing bollards, just to add a little bit of, you know, improvement to the site. Condition 10, the last condition, there's a recommendation for providing a stop sign or do not enter sign, or, I'm sorry, both, at the parking lot entrance to Wendy's to ease the traffic circulation or to prevent any conflicts. That's all staff has. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Are there questions of staff at this time? Well, thank you, Ms. Pease.
Yes, through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin. I was unable to follow exactly how you responded in your conditions to the comments of DOT, which were on page 102. They had several key redesigned features that they were going to require as part of the new driveway permit. And one of those included access to get onto Benson Boulevard into an exit-only configuration. And I didn't see that that was going to be the case on page 80, this detailed site plan. And there are a couple of other conditions that DOT wanted. So have all of those been resolved with DOT?
I believe they have. If you give me a moment, I'll reread this. I would just say generally that petitioners work very closely with DOT, and the petitioner will be making all sorts of improvements that are really beyond their responsibility. They're going to be filling in, creating a new turning lane and filling in part of the old turning lane. This is all within the state right-of-way, and it's something that needs to be done. It'll be a great improvement to traffic circulation, both to the site and to the public. And it's really, they're just doing it generously at the request of DOT.
Ms. Pease, that may be something that the state addresses at the time as they issue a driveway permit for that curb cut. They're very, very specific about the activity that can occur with a curb cut and a driveway.
There is a requirement to, I'm sorry, one of the recommended conditions of approval is to obtain a driveway permit, and there's a whole process for that, and they'll be required to make all improvements related to that. Final, you know, design plans, you know, down to the engineering will be.
And I don't think that's optional. I think when you're going to access a state roadway, you're required to get a driveway permit.
That's correct, but we make it a condition of approval just so that it doesn't get missed because after the hearing, should this be approved, then the petitioner will have to walk the plans around and get signatures on the resolution from each of these agencies confirming that it's been completed and then turn that into us.
Okay. Ms. Yoshimura?
Through the chair, Mr. McLaughlin. At the end of the second sentence on page 03, it says, "Therefore, the existing 162,350 square foot store is considered an approved site plan." So can you walk me through the legal reasoning, which is, the existing store was constructed in 1970, which is prior to the requirement for site plan reviews. Therefore, the store is considered an approved site plan?
Yes. The large retail establishment, big box review, was adopted by the Assembly, became a requirement of every building over 20,000 square feet in 2001. And there's a special, we have grandfather rights, nonconforming lots of record, nonconforming buildings. But large retail establishments have their own sort of set of grandfather rights. They all became, all of the big boxes that existed prior to 2001 became de facto approved site plans. And in this, the case of this site, it also received grandfather rights for landscaping, both interior and these arterial landscaping, perimeter landscaping.
So when applying the 10 percent rule, so you have to help me understand this again because it's not the way I want to understand it, so I have a problem. So if it's required under the new rules for a pedestrian walkway or the items that are identified on page four, just above community comments, there's nothing, those are requirements, so therefore, we can't ask for anything more?
Unfortunately, I, that's a good observation. The commission's, I think, in a sort of a difficult spot because there's very little in the way, the site is very tight, and there's very little in the way of changes that the commission could now make to the site plan because if the commission, for instance, required more landscaping, then there's no way that we could find that you could, that that could happen without losing additional parking spaces. And the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals approved the parking reduction as shown by this site plan, but, you know, didn't approve any greater number of parking spaces reduced. Just one more thing, that what the grandfather rights for the, or the, this is considered an approved site plan because it existed prior to 2001, that's as if to say that, you know, as if, when the commission approves a site plan, that becomes the approved site plan. And the commission didn't approve this, but it's treated as if the commission had approved the site plan.
So we have no authority to ask them to do anything else that would improve the physical appearance of their existing store?
Well, the commission can require up to 10 percent of the total cost of the project for community spaces and facade treatment, those sorts of items. But they've exceeded the 10 percent that they needed to provide, so no, the commission cannot ask for additional facade improvements per staff's reading of the code.
Just one more question, then I won't take anyone. So the installing of the landscape islands and the pedestrian walkway, was that, were those two items that were negotiated between the petitioner and staff? So it was decided that that's where the 10 percent was going to be used versus something else?
Well, yes. The, I guess, improvements that the Planning Department looks for are always safety improvements In this case, you know, the driveway, the landscaping, and the pedestrian walkway is something that's very important. But the facade treatment to the existing building was lower priority to some of those other, was considered by the department to be lower priority to some of the other improvements that they've offered to make. But Fred Meyer submitted their application, and then we worked with them from, I think, January to make changes, and they made many revisions and to accommodate the desires of different agencies. And this is the final product of, you know, those six months of negotiations. They submitted their site plan, I think it was back in January, and then we requested that they postpone it in order to resolve some issues, and they did that, and we've worked those out over this time period. They were, they wanted to get this project going very, very quickly, but took the time to, you know, bring the site plan to where it is now.
Thank you. Ms. Dean, you had been in the queue. You don't have any questions? You don't, okay? Any further questions to staff before I open the hearing? Apparently not. I will invite the petitioners representative to come forward at this time. And you have 10 minutes for your presentation, and you can reserve some of that time for rebuttal. If you request us to reserve a certain amount of time, we'll set the timer accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Robert McNamee, Senior Planner at Barkhouse &amp; Consulting Engineers in Kent, Washington. Our firm is the one that conducted the negotiations with Mr. McLaughlin and the NLT to bring about the site plan that you see here improving. Fred Meyer is seeking to add a fuel facility with five NPDs, which creates two separate fueling positions. As Mr. McLaughlin later told, we came with a slightly different site plan initially, which is the one I believe that the commissioner saw on page 80 of your packet. And we were going through several iterations of that site plan to produce the one which is on page 16, which outlines a completely different location, a completely different fuel facility configuration, with the intent to maximize the internal circulation within the parking lot, to minimize any traffic concerns, in particular with egress into Benson Boulevard, and also to provide a safer pedestrian environment within the site. I went through a lot of the steps and negotiations and whatnot. You have a pretty good picture of what we've done in your packet. The main elements that we tried to do to address the 10, what we called the 10 percent rule during our site plan review process, did focus on the landscaping improvements on the pedestrian path. By now, because Fred Meyer was already doing some facade improvements and strove at it within the last eight to 10 years, I believe. So we thought that in the interest of public safety and also vehicular circulation, that the overall area we should focus on was the pedestrian and landscaping issues. One of our colleagues from Kittleson and Associates will come up here in a minute and go through some of the particular. go through some of the particular traffic improvements that have been, according to the D O T and the M L A's traffic engineer, are in regard to addressing the circuit and circulation issues, particularly into Benson Boulevard. We approached this entire process with the idea of working cooperatively with not only the municipality, but also the D O T. And we knew, so we already began talking to the D O T's engineers, particularly talking to them regarding the driveway permits and whatnot that will be required for the two driveway access points on the site. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Anthony Yee from Kittleson. They conducted the traffic and parking analysis, and he can fill in some of the details there.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Anthony Yee with Kittleson and Associates, last name spelt Y I. Kittleson and Associates is about a 100-plus firm, engineering planning firm, specializes in traffic engineering and transportation planning. And we had the opportunity to work with not only the M L A, in addition with the Department of Transportation, trying to alleviate some of the existing congestion that's felt there today at specifically along Benson Boulevard. And if I can please ask the commission to turn to page 30, back to that area that staff had mentioned, because what I'd like to do maybe is just take a couple of minutes just to talk a little bit about probably the congestion that your folks are probably have driven through lately, and some of the challenges that we were faced with. And then I'd probably conclude my presentation with the recommended improvements that have been worked with the municipality as well as the D O T. So on page 30 of that area, everyone's probably familiar with that main driveway along Benson Boulevard. And today, as a motorist, you can actually enter into that driveway from a left-turn lane. So as you travel eastbound on Benson Boulevard and you want to access the site, you would actually turn into that, that eastbound left-turn lane, turn left into the site, and then meander your way through the parking field. Similarly, if you wanted to exit that site, you would basically travel southbound in that internal driveway and basically wait for a gap in traffic. You not only had to wait for the folks that were traveling into the store, but you also have to wait for traffic that's on Benson Boulevard. That situation, because of that inbound traffic is so heavy, there's quite a bit of congestion on site today. And those vehicles would stack up basically from the Benson driveway internally, you know, 10, 15, 20 feet cars deep. That was fairly regular based on a number of our observations taken throughout the year. On the flip side, as motorists traveled on Benson Boulevard entering into the Fred Meyer parking lot, we also observed quite a bit of queuing. And really, there was two types of phenomenon that we saw that was causing that queuing. If you look at the area there, there's a number of angry parking spaces that are basically angled as if a driver's coming into the parking field and turning right into that spot. One of the observations that we saw happen quite regularly were folks that actually entered into the parking field, they would sit there and wait and wait for that parking spot to open. Now, being the majority of those, I mean, they're handicapped spots, but what would happen is they would wait, and because of that inflow of traffic, that traffic would basically spill back not only to Benson, but into that left-turn lane on Benson Boulevard. And that sort of had a whipping effect now, because as those queue, as those cars stacked up to Benson Boulevard, the southbound traffic that wants to exit the site now cared because it's blocked. We did see a lot of courteous drivers, though, trying to create some type of gaps. Still, that wasn't enough to actually help the flow exit, and so you sort of have these two situations where cars were getting backed up, both northbound and southbound. The other phenomenon that we saw quite regularly is as the vehicles stacked up in the site, into, further into the site, as a motorist, if I were traveling and entering off of Benson Boulevard, if I wanted to take a left into one of those driveways, sometimes I couldn't because that queue was backed up so far. And as I sat there, same phenomenon would happen. The folks behind me would start backing up, backing up, and you created that same situation. So those are the two main situations that we saw happening out in the field that caused the congestion specifically for that drive aisle and at that driveway. And, you know, this wasn't something that was unknown. When we spoke with the D O T, their main traffic and safety person, when we spoke with the municipality's main traffic person, they sort of recognized the same thing. And, you know, I wish I could take credit for the actual solution that came up, and it was actually something that the D O T had looked at a while ago. But what it was, and maybe what I can do is point you back to page 16 of the site plan. This is back to the site plan that's currently before the commission today. We'll see along Benson Boulevard that there's two significant changes that we're proposing today. The first one is the existing Benson driveway, where today you have the ability to turn left in and left out. What we're proposing is to create a left-out only, so there isn't that internal, internal or external conflict. The biggest change there is, as you can see immediately to the left, there is a proposed inbound entrance into the property. And what we're proposing today is to actually create that inbound movement, so what we call a free-flow movement, meaning vehicles will be able to turn off of Benson Boulevard, turn into the site, and be able to do their turning maneuvers. If I could maybe answer one of the commission's questions, if I could point you to page, apologize, 102, which is the state's comments regarding some of their conditions. And this is maybe why I'm trying to get on the site plan.
You're starting to run out of time.
Absolutely.
So you might wait and let commissioners ask that question, okay?
That's perfect.
Yeah, you have another minute, so if anyone else wants to offer anything, and then we'll start questions from commissioners. Or do you want to save that minute?
We will save that minute, absolutely.
Okay. I have Ms. Dean in the queue first.
Through the chair, Mr. Yee. Thank you for coming up with some solutions on Benson, but you've neglected Northern Lights completely. I'm not quite sure why Northern Lights was neglected. When I go to that Fred Meyer's, I enter from Benson and I exit onto Northern Lights because I'm going back in that direction. I'm not getting back onto Benson. And I think I'm like a lot of people, and a lot of people cut through the Tesoro station in order to get onto Northern Lights. Nobody wants to go back towards Fred Meyer's, towards the store, and make a left turn there. It's very awkward. Why has nobody addressed Northern Lights and the exit, proper exit, onto the highway instead of just using Tesoro?
That's an excellent question. First, I'll start off by saying, you know, we worked very extensively with the municipality and the D O T on the traffic scoping process, so that was the very first part. And as part of that scoping process, I think the issue that sort of overwhelmingly took over the project was that vehicle congestion along Benson Boulevard. Not to say that, Ms. Dean, that there is not a congestion issue at the Northern Lights access. I think, I think as community members, you all know that both Benson and Northern Lights are heavily congested. These driveways are basically spread out throughout the entire corridor. Through the process with D O T and M L A, like I said, I think the focus and the entity of the traffic study was focused on that particular, that particular solution at Benson Boulevard, knowing that there was a lot of the safety, existing safety congestion issues, specifically at Benson. We did look at sort of on a qualitative basis, the driveway on Northern Lights, but the crash history, the amount of vehicle traffic actually using that driveway as compared to the Benson driveway, they weren't quite at the same level. Although I do understand that there is a lot of congestion at that driveway.
And, Mr. Yee, can I ask one more question? When you did your traffic counts for onto Northern Lights, your counter, was it placed at only the entrance and exit that's on Northern Lights? Or did you actually put one across the Tesoro gas station's parking lot so you could see how many people exit there also?
That's an excellent question. The counters were not at the Tesoro driveway. We were not counting the trips that were sort of coming in between Tesoro. And I do understand what you're saying is that folks sometimes avoid that Northern Lights driveway to go into Tesoro and then cut straight through to, I guess, whatever their uses were at. We did look at the crash history along that area and basically throughout the periphery of the site, and really the area that stood out overwhelmingly was the Benson. I do understand, though, that there's a lot of potential misses at the specific drivers or even internally, but no, we did not, to answer your question, we did not physically do any counts on the Tesoro driveway.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Steph wanted to comment on Ms. Pease's question also, on the bottom of page 102. I saw the bullet points that she was referring to. The first one, closing east access bollards, bollard breaks between Fred Meyer and Wendy's. So D O T is asking for that sort of access between Wendy's and the Fred Meyer site to be closed. I talked with the municipal traffic engineer about that very point, and he did not feel that it was an issue. He did not want that existing agreement for access between the two parcels to be closed. So the traffic engineer, the municipal traffic engineer sort of challenged my notion of closing that and opposed it. Extending the median to block aisle access, that's been taken care of with the site plan. The next bullet point, the third one, stop sign control, that's a condition of approval on the last page of the staff report. And then reshaping the store access into the exit configuration, that one has been accounted for with the site plan, too. So of those four points that D O T makes, one of them is not achieved with the site plan. And that has to do with, you know, our traffic engineer didn't see any reason, an issue with, he said that the amount of traffic was going to be so minor, he didn't foresee a conflict in that location. You can see that the bollards, the existing bollards are on the Fred Meyer site, so there's an agreement between Fred Meyer's and the Wendy's for that drive-through. And it allows people from Wendy's to access the Fred Meyer site without having to go back out to the Seward Highway. Now, it's going to be a one-way only. The department recommendation, that same condition is saying there should be a stop sign, there should be a do not enter sign. So it would be exit only from the Fred Meyer, I'm sorry, from the Wendy's drive-through to the Fred Meyer site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, two questions for Ms. Yee. Through the chair. Where, first question, where are the exits now? Don't see the arrows on the site plan.
If I can point you on back to page 16, and maybe Mr. McNeil can pass up on us while, on the larger plan, yeah. So, Mr. Yee, are you referring to the exits only or just the driveways in general?
The exits out, if I understand correctly, you can no longer, excuse me, you will or will not be able to exit onto Northern Lights? You will be able to exit onto Northern Lights, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And where are those, are there's two exits onto Northern Lights or one?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And just to continue with that, my personal experience is with exiting onto Northern Lights, and there being congestion in exiting onto Northern Lights because the left-most lanes of Northern Lights back up, stack up, I guess you call it. With everybody leaving the site onto Northern Lights, will you not have stacking coming back into the parking lot considerably? You've reduced the number of exits, and it's already hard in some cases to get out onto Northern Lights.
Yeah, I understand that, and Mr. McNeil probably understood it better than I can, but the access points along Northern Lights are not changing at all. There's no access changes on Northern Lights or on the Seward Highway. The only access change is on Benson Boulevard, where we're getting rid of or modifying the existing left-in, left-out, and actually creating a separate driveway to accommodate a inbound exclusive lane and then an outbound exclusive lane.
Yeah, I understand now. So you haven't reduced the number of exits?
No.
Okay. The other question I had is with regard to the diagonal parking along the west side of the building. And I ask this open-mindedly, is it, would it be an improvement to slant it the other way now that most of the traffic is going to be coming south?
Yeah, we did, we did better about a couple of different times, and I think the reason why that was to potentially keep it the way it was, the way that, we lived through a couple of site plan revisions. Most stories try to build, there is an opportunity to slant them the other direction. That drive aisle there that you see today, it's, you're able to travel northbound and southbound on it. You'll continually, you will be able to continue to do that in the future, even with this change, but we can modify that angle there to accommodate a little bit better. The reason why we were sort of hesitant not to do that, as a motorist, when you pull out of that driveway, you're actually pulling backwards into the direction of travel that you would want to go. If we were to reverse it in the other direction, when you back out, you'd actually probably have to swing pretty wide into the southbound lane to travel southbound. So that's the reason why we left it the direction that it was, because we were planning on leaving it two-way.
Okay. How would, how would a motorist find those spots? You'd need to drive into them while heading north, so how would you circulate through the parking lot to get to those spaces?
That's an excellent question. I apologize because the printout on page 16 is fairly light, but I may be able to point, as you're traveling southbound along the front of the store, there's actually, I'll try to talk real loud, there's actually a, this maintains two ways, there's actually ability for vehicles actually to circulate around so that if a vehicle did see an open parking spot, they would be able to circulate around and get to it. They may not get to it quick enough before somebody else can, but they would have that ability. We purposely did that because we wanted to make sure that as vehicles circulated through that portion of the parking lot, that they had the ability to sort of full movement and not accidentally have to be forced to exit the site and then turn back around. So we purposely made sure that folks could circle around that southern portion of the parking lot there, which is very difficult to see on page 16.
All right. Well, here the expert spec, it seems to me that having people spot a parking spot and make a circular loop against this queue of traffic waiting to exit onto Benson is congestion and sort of invitation for kind of shooting out. I don't know. It doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but...
Yeah, I think, I guess the way that I see it, it's sort of a lesser of two evils. I would rather, as a motorist and as an engineer, see a vehicle exiting out of a drive aisle into their appropriate lane from an angled spot versus having them sort of have to cross traffic and actually impede both traffic northbound and southbound. If anything, I'd love to see them impede in the northbound direction, which is in theory the direction of less traffic. What I want to try to do is I want to try to get traffic circulating out of the site almost as freely as traffic enters into the site so that basically circulation can be maintained throughout the parking field. But you're absolutely right, it's sort of the catch-22, there's definitely pluses and minuses of both, and this is the one that sort of rose to the top.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
Planning Department recommends a new condition, condition 11, resolved with planning angular There was discussions between staff and Mr. McNeil about that very issue, the angular parking, and we're just not seeing what we talked about, I think, on this site plan, but maybe it was just something that one of us missed. But we can resolve that by a new condition stating, resolved with planning angular parking. The planning department, I think, agrees with Ms. Pease's view, and we just, we'd work that out with the petitioner.
Okay, Mr. Eisham?
My, I'm wondering, Mr. Yee, I think what happens, the people are going to actually swing across a whole lane of traffic and almost do a semi-U-turn to pull in there, and you may really have problems. Then I, so I think you do need to resolve that.
Yes, I was just tracking out how I would get over to that parking. And I would be crossing the lane of incoming traffic or outgoing traffic. I would come in and I would cut down a row. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Dean, seconded by Ms. Pease.
In the matter of 2010-031, Madam Chair, I move to approve this site plan review with the department recommendations 1 through 10, with an additional number 11 that will resolve with planning for angular parking locations and directions.
Okay. Do you care to discuss your motion?
I think everything is pretty well thought out. I think there's a lot of issues that'll still be worked out with the city, and I do think that they are trying to improve the property.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the approved site plan in question is the site plan on pages 16 through 20, looks like, 28. And I just mention that because there are older site plans attached farther back. It confused me a little bit. And then in speaking to the motion, I wanted to say that this additional landscaping, although rather minimal on a site of this size, it's a step, when this came, when site changes came before the commission in 2005, the commission, for whatever reason, declined to put anything, to require any additional landscaping, so this small amount of landscaping will begin to help to make this a little more aesthetically pleasing site. And the Fred Meyer, the petitioners commend, it should be commended for working with DOT to resolve the traffic congestion on Benson. Understand they wanted to build as expeditiously as possible, and it took a little time to work out some of the traffic situations at Benson, so it's an improvement to the general circulation of the area to have done so.
Okay, Ms. Yoshimura.
Well, I'm really quite conflicted. I understand what the rules are, and I don't like them, really, quite frankly. I don't think that a driveway being required by DOT in order to accommodate the changes in this site plan should be considered part of the 10% improvements. I am familiar with the DOT process for driveways. I don't think that was the intent of the Big Box ordinance, or at least I hope that it would not be. As you all know, when we did the Walmart store, I am concerned about the overall appearance of the midtown area and big boxes. This store was built in 1970. It was remodeled, according to the petitioner, about eight or 10 years ago. I am very familiar with this site and the congestion. I think the gas station is only going to add to the congestion, and I understand that in a competitive situation, that Fred Meyer's can do a much better job with their exteriors. I point to the Wasilla store, which is a new store, probably less than 10 years old, that was recently remodeled with a better facade because Target went in across the street, and there's no intent here to improve this building. And so I expect this motion to pass, but I am not going to be supportive of it.
Okay. Are you back in the queue, Ms. Pease?
Yes, I am. Ms. Yoshimura drew to my attention something that I guess I just didn't register, which is that the driveway is part of the site improvements to bring the site toward the Big Box standards. Is Mr. McLaughlin through the chair? Ms. Yoshimura had a very good point about the driveway being a traffic requirement. Is it typical to credit required traffic improvements toward the site upgrade, the 10% site upgrade?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease. I think I would answer the question, I, so staff separated out the cost of the landscaping and pedestrian walkway from the cost of the new driveway so that you could see specifically what money was devoted to what. You can add those two together or not. The department feels that, the department feels that, well, I'll just, I'll just say that the, the new driveway access is not required of this gas station. They could build this gas station and not provide this new driveway to Benson Boulevard, and everything would be hunky-dory. There would still continue to be this traffic conflict at that, at that exit onto Benson Boulevard, and so this is a, you know, a very good improvement to the site, benefit to the public, but the commission's welcome to do the math on it.
I see that. We just did the math, and we do now realize that the pedestrian walkway and the landscaping alone exceeds 10% of the project cost, so thank you for, no, I've got that clarified, I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, any further comments? Well, I don't comment often, but I will comment about this particular petition. I'm extremely familiar with this site because this happens to be the Fred Meyer store I shop at. I'm very familiar with the traffic congestion, particularly with the Northern Lights side because that's the side I go out when I shop. But I don't know the petitioner has caused the problem on the Northern Lights side, and I don't know that if, what can be done to really fix that because they can't slow the traffic down on Northern Lights by having any more curb cuts. There are two right there, the one at Tesoro and the one coming out of the store, and it is what it is. I think the solution, well, the proposal of having an in-and-out driveway on Benson, hopefully will relieve some of that congestion, and it can, by the way, I want to commend Mr. Gueye for his excellent representation of what it's like on a typical day in that Fred Meyer shopping parking lot. The other thing that I find particularly pleasing about the site plan is with the new driveway, the way that traffic will be routed through there, that particular, what I call just the danger zone, there's an area that's quite, it's like a long driveway at the back of that parking lot where people don't pay attention when they're driving, they just zip through there, and you have to be very careful when you're driving through there because it's just, well, it's, and it's not because the parking lot's necessarily bad, it's because of bad people behavior, and I think this is going to discourage some of that, or I'm hopeful. I am actually quite pleased with this design. I think it's going to be an improvement over what's there at that corner and that part of the site now. I actually don't anticipate it's going to cause a problem. I think people are going to come and shop for their groceries and their drugs, and they're going to stop and get their gas before they leave the site, and they're going to go home. So I'm going to be supporting it. I believe that it meets all the standards and criteria of the, that are required for a site plan, and I do appreciate the fact that the petitioner has taken the time to work with staff over the past period of time to get this worked out. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing and seeing none? There is, Nancy. Ms. Pease, you. Sorry, Ms. Yoshimura, I, my short-term memory isn't working well tonight. So we'll do a voice vote.
If I could clarify, it's okay to use the, go ahead and vote, and then I'll do a verbal vote.
Okay.
Recap.
Recap, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you announce our individual votes.
Okay, voting in favor, Nancy Pease, Jim Frederick, Arthur Eishem, Bruce Phelps, Stacy Dean. Opposed, Connie Yoshimura. And Tony, you didn't...
I didn't show up. Oh, I, it's because I used the wrong device.
And voting in favor, Tony Jones.
So that motion passes. The site plan has been approved. Do you want any of your materials back, like these drawings? Save the three?
I'll take them, then.
Okay. You're welcome. Yeah, a lot of paper. Okay, a couple of items of business before we adjourn. The director's meeting for the 17th was canceled. I assume you all got the emails about that. And our next meeting is not until the 12th of July. Looks like it's going to be pretty full. So does anyone have anything they wish to discuss under Commissioner's comments?
Are we going to get the committee sorted out?
Yes, I've had...
The site selection committee doesn't exist?
No, and I've had several, I've had several volunteers come forward, and it's just my inaction. I'll get that taken care of, Mr. Eishem. Oh, one other thing, Ms. Yoshimura.
I wanted to point out the Western Planner proposal.
Yes.
And Joel and Marco, written by Perry Albers, Tom Todd, who was talking about using the house on the children.
I, yes, I have it at home, yes. Yes, I get the Western Planner. One of the things I wanted to bring up this evening is tonight the school board is dealing with this proposed master plan for West High and Romig, and how there's this proposal to have a, you know, add a community center and such, and I kind of was wondering where the planning commission fit into this process, since it sounds like it's a, it has a potential to be a pretty good community-sized community facility, and also since we're going to be developing a West Anchorage, you know, neighborhood plan this next year, and I just think it would, it's quite timely that we make an inquiry through our planning director.
Manager?
Yes.
Listening to Carol come on the Channel 2 News this evening, she was concerned that people had the impression that there was going to be some structural addition to the school campus in order to accommodate this community environment, and what her point was is that the thrust is to, is to use the existing facility more efficiently to accommodate community activities, in other words, evenings, weekends, and summers, rather than adding capital improvements to the, to the school in the name of a community engagement center. So I, I think it's a matter of use rather than, you know, site planning or stuff like that.
Well, they're asking for a million dollars to develop the plan.
Okay, wow.
And one, I just want to get information...
Yeah, well, you can do, you can spend a million dollars without building anything too, so...
Oh, well, you wouldn't be building anything for a million dollars.
Unfortunately.
But I would like, Francis, if you could take back to Jerry Weaver, to just get some information for us about that.
No, I think that, I think that's a great idea.
I think that that would be a good thing to do, because if there's any big, you know, planning going on about community facilities or the potential for it, let's just say we're inviting ourselves to the party. And so in that regard, I expect Mr. Weaver to find out whoever's in charge and let them know that we're waiting for our invitations.
I'll call Mike Abbott tomorrow, and I'll send everyone an email with what I learned.
Thank you so much. Yes, planning is the first word in our title, and we may have some, you know, things that we can, we might be able to offer to help them and save the community some money. And especially since I'm paying my tax bill tomorrow. I do everything I can to save my tax money.
And see what portion of it goes to schools, we should get maximum mileage out of it.
And, and you have something to offer, Ms. Pease?
No, I just wanted to say that, we, we have under a comprehensive plan a couple of policies that could pertain to the West High community center slash school renovation, so I think, you know, such as efficient use of existing facilities and so forth, community centers, so we should...
Invite ourselves to the party.
Yes, have an active role.
Okay, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Seconding Mr. Frederick and seconded by Ms. Pease, is there any objection? Hearing none? We're adjourned.